All right, welcome everybody. It is Tuesday, January tenth. It is seven o'clock. We are in the Lee Middle and High School. Library. We are a neighbor to a meeting for Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law C thirty A section twenty. This meeting will take place virtually via Zoom for those committee members and attendees choosing to access in that manner. The rest of the general public is invited to attend. I am going to call this meeting to order pursuant. Pursuant to mass general law C thirty A. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. Tonight, we are going to have our pledge of allegiance led by Eva. And Mason Lucy. I'm going to say that's my favorite part of the civil committee meeting. Not that I don't love spending time with that. All right. The mission statement of Lee Public Schools is to ensure students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can I trouble you for a roll call, please?
Here. Present.
Here.
Ms. Norman.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Strickler.
Here.
Mrs. Wadsworth.
Here.
All right. First thing on our agenda is the approval of the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Lee School Committee Meeting. While a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda. Roll call, please.
Ms. Robyn.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Ms. Norman.
Yes.
Mr. Nicko.
Yes.
Ms. Strickler.
Yeah.
This is Wadsworth.
Abstain.
All right, next up, we have public input with technicals.
Residents of Lee are invited to address the committees regarding items on this evening's agenda at this time. Comments are limited to three minutes. Issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school.
Don't see anybody on our.
Venture.
Board. All right. Next up, we have our reports. First up, we have. I was gonna say, Jacob, you've got a lot of stuff there.
So, the, um. In the high school of student government.
We can share.
Is your. And here's to bettering the student body and. Um, this, we had an issue last year starting that stating that why didn't students get put in the classes that they actually signed up for? Um, so we actually sent out a survey last year of what students would love to learn outside of the classroom, like real-world life skills. Um, and then last year, we had a, um, it was one period with seventh grade. Um, about like a real-world life skills. And now this year, we are expanding it to the whole school for a whole day, including. The school. Um, this is the sign-up sheet for that that was given to students before Christmas break. These are all the events that are being offered to students in grades seven to twelve. Um, they were asked to rate their best choices, one being, uh, they want to take it the most all the way down to ten. They were given ten options. And then student government will formulate a schedule based on that. Uh, this event is taking place a week from Friday, the twentieth of January. Um, four periods. We also do have some, um, outside, um, people coming in to speak about, um, such as. Um, Appalachian Trail Group. We have biking boards with pairs of tires coming in. Um. IRS because if you weren't interested in taxis. Well, and that tire gave us a five hundred dollar grant to fund this event. Um, so we thank them a lot for, um, supporting student government in this whole event. Um, and we're really excited to get, um, students more out in the classroom, learning real-world skills for a day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome. How many questions?
Do you have any questions about this?
I think this is great.
I'm thrilled.
And just seeing the diversity on here, many different types of choices. And, uh, thank you even bringing this and thank you very much.
Yeah, I might show up for some of these.
Yeah.
No, I think this is awesome. Personal finance is phenomenal. I'm happy that that's there. Um, and, you know, that was. That's, uh, that's pretty big. The ones that highlight are the ones that.
Yeah, so the ones that are highlighted are great for like outside speakers coming in on the topic. Now, they've been great. They have these on the mass hires for prayer first. Yeah, it was a real good job.
Got it, of course.
Um, that is it.
It?
Yep, just a big event.
Thank you, Jacob.
Take your time.
All right. Next up, we got Mike Pashard with our superintendent's update.
All right. Uh, thank you and thank you, uh, Jake for that, uh, very good update. Appreciate that. Um, enrollment, uh, update as of January, uh, first, twenty twenty-three, six hundred and forty-three students, of which a hundred and fifty-three are school choice. And forty-four are being tuitioned in, uh, from Farmington River, um, and Tarrington. Uh, I was asked, um, to share some historical, uh, data on where we are relative to sort of a January first enrollment. And you'll see that on the second, uh, page here, the slide that's now in front of you. Um, and you can see a drastic drop since two thousand and nineteen. Um, when we had six hundred and ninety-three, uh, students. We're down fifty students, uh, from that. That obviously has an impact on. Uh, financially, um, and, um, grammatically, uh, to be very honest. Financially, that impacts, uh, chapter seventy money. Uh, if those students are coming from school choice, it impacts those revenues as well. Uh, but programmatically, um, we run into some issues where we've got some really small class sizes, uh, and whether we can run all of the classes that we wish to. Um, however, uh, my hope is, uh, as we continue to be, uh, aggressive in, um, promoting, uh, the Lee Public Schools, uh, particularly for school choice. And as, uh, people may, um, choose to move in, uh, to the town of Lee, uh, and/or Tarrington. Um, we, um, we can bring those numbers, uh, back up to, uh, more healthy. Uh, but we're still operating, uh, we're still operating well and we're, we're doing, uh, able to do some really good work, I think, even with small class sizes. Uh, so that's, that's a benefit there.
I think the great news is that if you look at it in the great grand scheme of things, our numbers are down, but our choice numbers are up and our tuition numbers are up.
Right. Which is interesting because we keep getting, uh, people moving in. I don't know where they're, where they're vanishing to, but, uh, again, I appreciate that the ask about where we are historically and I hope that this is helpful, uh, to give this, uh, the committee and the community some perspective on, uh, our enrollment. Uh, over nineteen, uh, data update, uh, through January fifth, just, it's been a long time, uh, since we've talked about this, but I thought it was important, uh, to share some of this with you county, uh, wide. Um, and, and Lee-wide, so the top lines here are relative to, uh, the county and then Lee data are there as well. Uh, our positivity rate is, um, is, is manageable. Um, and, uh, we're, we're doing okay. Uh, I want to remind people, um, that, um, while, uh, while it's back. Um. People need to be, uh, encouraged to wear masks if they, uh, so are so inclined. Uh, there is no restriction or limitation to that. Uh, what we do encourage people to do is stay home if they're not feeling well. Uh, so that's the best protection for, uh, everyone in our school community. Uh, so if you're under the weather, uh, test, please, uh, if you don't feel well, um, and if you do test positive, uh, check in with the school nurse and we'll give you the protocols to follow to make sure that you return. Uh, when you can and in the fashion that you can. And for those people who are looking for additional tests, we know that we did provide, um, tests, at-home tests before the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, that were designed to test upon return after Thanksgiving and as well after the, uh, December break. But if you need additional tests, uh, they are still available for tests per household through the United States Postal Service. So when this, uh, presentation is posted to the website tomorrow, you can click the link or you can follow that link or do a search for, uh, USPS COVID tests. And, um, you're encouraged to make sure you're taking care of that. So I hope, uh, nobody's too freaked out by the image that's there, but, uh, it does feel like, uh, it does feel like it is sort of, uh. I won't do any, uh, imitations here. So, um, strategic improvement plan update. Uh, I'll move through this relatively quickly, but so that, uh, you know, we, we passed that last year. We approved that plan last year and I want to make sure people know, um, math continues to roll forward with, um, with the, the rollout of, uh, the new materials, math materials through HMH. Um, we are, um, we continue to explore, um, the relocation of grade six. That'll come, that'll come again later on. Um, but technology standards and grant monies to support work in that area continue to happen. We have an additional day, uh, next year, uh, for district-determined professional development. Uh, the pilot team, um, for EL, uh, for math, uh, and ELA have continued to meet. Um, the, uh, ELA pilot team, uh, is. Making final decisions about when to roll out new materials. And it looks like, uh, they've come to some consensus to, um, to try to pilot something through the balance of this year. And then we will be looking to apply, uh, for a grant for high-quality instructional materials in ELA that will grant us up to two hundred thousand dollars, uh, to offset the cost of those materials. Uh, if you'll recall, we budgeted monies, uh, for both math and ELA using ESER funds. If we get this grant, uh, then that would allow us to repurpose some of those other grant funds through ESER, uh, for other, uh, curriculum-related materials as necessary. Um, wellness, uh, speaker series update. Uh, we've been exploring, uh, bringing in some, uh, speakers for the students. We had, uh. We were very close to securing a guy named Leo Rogers. Uh, Leo Rogers is a, um, an amputee cyclist. Uh, and, uh, we, we came across him about a year, a year ago, a year and a half ago, and we had some conversations with him. Uh, we weren't able to bring him in with, uh, sort of the status of COVID. And then unfortunately, uh, Leo was in an accident, uh, a couple of weeks ago and as, as his, his speaking tour is, uh, put on hold for a little bit. But, uh, we remain hopeful we'll be able to find somebody else to bring in who will be inspirational to our students. Um, the PE curriculum update K to twelve, which was one of our target areas, has not started yet. Um, the school adjustment counselor, that was a wellness, um, target to have four adjustment counselors, two in each building. We currently have three. That would be, again, a financial investment, uh, that the committee, uh, in the community would need to make. And we continue to explore funding sources to, for extended day and extended year programs. In the area of technology, uh, we're, we are, I'm gonna hope to work with the town to use capital monies and E-rate funding to update the network server switches and wireless access points. Those, um, many of those, uh, pieces of equipment are, uh, beyond, uh, useful life. And so we are hoping that they don't fail us. Um, but we hope to be able to get something in place to have those updated, um, in the coming year. And then again, uh, district organization, uh, this is about, uh, the exploration of moving, uh, grade six, uh, which is a, a traditional middle school grade. Uh, from, uh, Lee Elementary School to Lee Middle and High School. Uh, we will convene a study group, uh, in the coming months. I will tell you that that had been targeted to be done this fall to convene that study group. Uh, just, it, we had so many things going on, it just wasn't feasible. So hopefully we can get that going, um, in the coming, uh, coming weeks or months. In this court installation, you remember this, uh, uh, thing that we, we talked about that the town secured, uh, grant funds for? Installation began today. They started to dig, uh, how far down? Eighteen inches, two feet? I don't know. About two feet down. So the town was on site. Uh, this morning, starting to dig into the, uh, the area behind the school, uh, to get that pad, concrete pad, um, laid. So, uh, this is sort of, this is hard to see and I apologize, but I couldn't, I didn't want to make it too big and overwhelming. But really, you can, when you look at this and you'll be able to see it when it's on the website, uh, the stations that go through here go through a series of, of exercises that go in this order for a core squat push lunge. I don't need to read those to you, uh, but they're saying seven movements in seven minutes. Um, and so, uh, the idea here is to get, uh, our student body who are age-appropriate out there using that as soon as it's installed, as well as members of the community. So it's a pretty exciting thing and we're glad, uh, we, a little bit unexpected, I will tell you, that we didn't know that, um, that the town was gonna be here this morning, uh, with shovels in the ground. But, but, uh, we're, we're, either way, we're glad that they did because that's progress.
Yeah.
Uh, I know you've seen this before. I continue. We've been very fortunate, uh, this year, uh, with, with weather, uh, knock. Uh, knock on wood, this, we've been fortunate this school year. Um, so, uh, you know, but reminder, we do our best that we can and, and, uh, you know, I, I swung and missed, uh, on that snow day back in, in December, but, uh, we. I think just about everybody did, so. Yeah. I, everybody could use one, uh, once in a while, for sure. Um, and a quick reminder, um, Monday, the sixteenth, there's no school, uh, and the semester, I know, put ends on the, uh, twentieth. I think it actually ends on the nineteenth. Um, and, or is it on the twentieth? Mr. Is, so that's the last day of the first semester and that's the day that, um, Jake was talking about having, uh, the speakers in for, for a few hours. So. That is, uh, that is what I had for you.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
My question is, I have, uh, fitness court. Thank you, uh, for that update, uh, that puts the mind of a very curious eight-year-old that I know pretty well. Long conversation for what they were doing today. Um, and then also just a quick note about your extended day activities. I, I don't know the name of it offhand. Someone was talking to me about it a couple of weeks ago. Berkshire Hills does a one-hundred percent grant-based, um, science project after school.
Oh, through twenty-first century, yeah.
I, I don't know what it is. I, I don't, someone told me about, uh, my mind was like five different places, but I just, it just jogged my memory for that.
We, we, yeah, we could explore that, but, uh, yeah, I, I will tell you that in my previous district, we, we did after-school, uh, programming through twenty-first century, which is what I understand Berkshire Hills to do. Uh, we can explore that for sure.
I'm just curious what the cost of the technology would be and the usable life.
About a hundred and. The, uh, the technology, hundred and.
The, the network back.
Yeah, eighty or so.
The, the total cost before E-rate would be about two hundred and sixty. E-rate could pay for about seventy.
Seventy dollars.
And, and this is just a floral document and things like that.
That is the actual, it's the switches, is the biggest thing there. It's the switches and wireless access points. So those are the things that actually allow the data to move. Um, ours are currently twelve years old. Over the halls. It's like full of files. We still need the switches. Um, ours are twelve years old, which is, you know, depending who you talk to, anywhere from five to six years beyond their expected life.
Yeah.
Uh, if that, if, if, for example, the core switch in that room, or that room down, nobody in the district can be near.
Yeah, the Hudson, Jackson, um, just in case.
And, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
They don't make those anymore. These are identified when somebody's own use. The overnight hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, those are, of course, those are not things that, they're, they're so pricey, you can't keep them in stock.
Right.
Uh, they're not actually on the way around, but it is a huge expense. Um, but right now, we're kind of. Knocking on wood, um, every year.
Is our student management system in the cloud or is it on-prem?
Almost all of our actual core programs are now posted in the cloud.
Yeah.
Um, including our lunch system, student information system, uh, budget sense, um, system, all of those, the library system, all of those are now posted in the cloud. This is the thing that allows everybody to access the file.
And E-rate's only doing what? Less than fifty in category two?
We have a limit that we can do because of our size, right? So it's about, it's seventy percent category two, but based upon our allowable budget for category two, they will reimburse, they will pay for that seventy.
I mean, that's good. We want more.
Thank you. Other questions?
Who's Jake?
Jacob.
Oh, thank you. I'm like, which Jacob?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. There's so many kicking around.
All right. Next up, we have Tim Martin from Lee Elementary School.
Coming off the winter break, I just have a few things about the new calendar, particularly the name, uh, four or two, uh, the event that starts that ends Friday, January twentieth, marking the halfway point of school year. Real hard to believe. Uh, the four cards we sent out that following week, on Friday, during the third week. Uh, the winter band concert is taking place this week. One is actually taking place tonight, uh, and the other takes place on Thursday. Our team school adjustment counselors are implementing our life skill program to sixth grade, over the next five weeks, to use the Botman Life Skills curriculum, which is very face. Uh, and then our latest edition of The Wildcat Tales was distributed right before break. Uh, link to that is here, you can find it at the double fifteen newsletter, uh, found on the OES website.
Does anyone have any questions for Tim?
Actually, I'm kind of off, off topic here.
Well, I know if we can.
Do we not have a salad bar in the elementary school? There is not a salad bar currently, however, I am talking with, uh, you know, food services director, trying to figure out what that, like, abnormality is.
What if there were, like, fun fact, I saw it in the school this, like, ten years ago. Shouldn't have been there anyhow. Uh, there was a salad bar back then. I was just, I was talking, it's like, my, my youngest destroyed the salad. She, she, their names are pretty good.
I think there was one before COVID.
I understand. And that was the food services director recently, last week, and we talked specifically about salad bar, uh, we chair this as well. We're also talking about, um, expanding breakfast access. So we're trying to get, uh, you know, breakfast carts upstairs. So those students that come in through the front entrance instead of the lower entrance, uh, can get one of those grab-and-go breakfasts. We're trying to expand that as well. Yeah. There's a grant opportunity that she is, uh, pursuing that, we have a decent chance of, you know, and with that, we will purchase technology to be able to have, it's amongst the number of, uh, detractors. Again, the more we can get access to breakfast, lunch, any, any food.
Yeah.
Um, I'll give a shout-out, too, to a local family. They, obviously, they make a lot of fresh foods, uh, weekly, every other week or so. It's a great asset that. You know, this just gives kids who don't bring a particular snack to school, some, you know, fresh fruit, which is a great alternative.
Fabulous. Thank you.
We had one before COVID. Where'd it go?
Wow. We probably got, probably because of COVID and everything, you know.
Do, do, I mean, do we have a physical salad bar?
So sometimes salad bars can be food sanitary as you.
Yeah, we had a, there was a.
An actual, like.
Yeah, it rolls.
Yeah.
Because, is there one in, in the, here in the Noel High School? Yes. It, it came back a couple of months ago after it was on hiatus going forward.
Yeah.
We do want to have salad bar.
Yeah.
Okay. We're, we're teaching kids to be healthy. We'll start early. Thank you, guys.
Other questions? All right. Can we, can we, like, break that this time? Okay. Lee Middle and High School, Greg, forget you.
I'm only quick as well because we are, uh, shortly coming back after, uh, the, uh, the break. Um, as everybody else has said, the annual semester one is coming up, um, next Friday, January tenth. Um, three o'clock PM, and I, I want to adjust, breaks close. And then, again, as everybody said, that is our intercession day of the year. Um, so everybody should be, uh, really wrapping things up on Thursday, the nineteenth, but grades do stay open for the semester until three o'clock on Friday, the twentieth. Um, we plan on issuing corporates on Friday, the twentieth. We will be, uh, shortly after the start of the new semester, we will be going out into classrooms. The counselors will be going on into every English classroom. Uh, to once again deliver training on the signs of suicide SOS program. Uh, we started this, I want to say, five or six years ago. Uh, we now do a full presentation to the entire student body every two years. And then the off-years, we do a refresher training, um, for faculty and staff members. Um, as two purposes really, to, um, have a chance for all, everybody, students and staff, to really be able to identify what are some ways that. That either they or a friend, uh, may be depressed or, um, possibly, um, that they, um. Um, and the second piece of that is how to respond. We teach kids that, you know, the whole idea is gift card somebody. If you have an inkling of a gift card, make sure you talk to a trusted adult. Um, and the third piece of it is as part of the SOS training, every student does do a exit survey, um, evaluation tool that the council can look over. It's a short screen to, um, chances we have a look over to try to look at. Um, and it's very important training that we do. And, um, last time we did it, two years ago, we were in the middle of COVID. Uh, we saw some huge spikes in, um, behaviors that we run into, getting to do this. Um, we're hoping that this time, we, we will get less than that, but it's important to do it to see what those, who goes through. Um, and then the last item I will bring up today is that next month, we will be bringing to you, as we do every February, the program of studies for the next school year, freshman year approval, um, that program for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Any questions for Greg? You good?
You got us.
Yeah. All right. Next up, we have the special education with Jen Morton.
Um, we have had a couple of new hires since we had that last time. We hired a new professional in our preschool program. Her name is Kathy Rechey. She is vocal. Um, and also we hired a new special education secretary. Her name is Mary Mon, but she started last week. Um, so that's been great. We've had a couple of other interviews. We still have several open positions. I am hopeful that we will be able to fill those in the next week or so. Um, I will keep a side update about that. And we've also set the date for preschool screening for three and four-year-olds. It will be April, when we get to baseball. Uh, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, and that will be posted in the paper. It will go out, um, to all of our parents and we'll care with Jess Maloney. We work with a lot of the other, uh, families in the district. Um, make sure that any child, if they live in me, regardless of whether or not they attend me, if they're three or four years old, um, we would love to have them come and do a screen in the spring. We do them, we do them several years. So at three, at four, and then again at five for kindergarten. Um, and that's just to make sure that if there is, are any concerns in any developmental area that we can evaluate further if we feel the need is there. And that's all I have there.
Does anybody have any questions for Jen? All right. Jordan, facilities.
Okay, thank you. Uh, currently, we have, uh, an electrical inspection going on at Element Just and LBS, which is for preventative maintenance. And safety inspection. We'll be receiving thermal report, the whole of our electrical panel and subpanels, just to make sure that it is safe and functional. Uh, cold weather preparations over the holidays were successful. No loss of damage reported. Um, it was requested by the town to have a school backflow valve checked again this year. Uh, since that request, all valves have been inspected and passed. Uh, the LBS playground project is nearing completion. Uh, weather, some tickets on the team, uh, have delayed it, but, uh, we're moving the materials up there. Uh, tomorrow, all of the material that was down here will be up there. Uh, they're trying to hopefully get all that material broadcasted by now in a week. But, uh, we are ready with, uh, the study project. Um, the exercise, uh, stick that Superintendent Rashard was referring to, um, I will monitor and support the town, uh, by November eighths. Uh, we are fully staffed, uh, at LBS, and we have all, this is right. Uh, all the winter and snow removal equipment is, is ready. Uh, Otis Elevator, who was here to do, uh. Looking into what we needed on the elevator.
looking into what we needed on the elevator stop switch, compliance issue that we have. And they were kind of ready, they're pretty full of field specialists, bills, which we will not pay, we will have to be done. Find out, Otis sent out a representative, unbeknownst to me, where they were revisiting the elevator because there's many places reporting that the corrections at the cost of eighty-five hundred dollars are, are not needed or only partially to be at scale. So I'm working with Otis, waiting to hear back from them on their current findings. That eighty-five hundred dollar money may not be a needed fund this fiscal year, and that's what it definitely. I enrolled in the MIA Ocean Certificate Program and the HARA DEVEE Training, which the federal certification, that will be awarded on completion and provide the town conference by one forty-five percent for their rewards program. Lastly, all HVAC systems are operating correctly and efficiently, and
Any questions for Gordon?
Well, I don't, I don't have a question. I have a, so Otis Elevator, we go all over the, the panel well. So a lot of our lives are having similar issues with their elevators now. So there, there are other elevator companies you can explore, but you have a contract with Otis now, just to take a look at that, see when it expires and.
We just came under contract with Otis, because I always purchase basically all of it.
Right, but there, yeah, but there are other ones that have come up that are options for the future. And I can get to those.
Any other questions for Gordon?
No, Ms. Harmon, if I could. Two things. One, I, I was remiss not to take a quick moment during my report to give a shout out to the seventh grade math students who sit in front of me each day. Because I, I, I have to tell the committee, and, and for those people who are at home, the, the last, however many weeks, it's been six weeks and probably five weeks of teaching or so, have been rewarding for me and, and important for me as a, as a leader to be in front of kids and, and being able to empathize with our faculty and the work that they do every day. And Mr. Brigenti is, is similarly teaching a class. And so I just wanna, I wanna give a shout out to those, those kids who are in front of me every day, because they, they, they bring a, they have a special place in my, in my heart. They really do. And they've put up with me. So that's, they deserve a shout out, anyway. And then, uh, Jordan didn't talk about it, but we did have an issue, or we do have an issue with some of the concrete that was, concrete work that was done this past summer. It has, particularly the first part of concrete that was poured outside of where my office is, has already started to fail. But Jordan has worked with the contractor, and they recognized that the, the work that was done early wasn't up to par. So they will be addressing that issue as soon as they're able to. But it, it looks like they'll be tearing up that concrete and reporing better. Concrete is the only area of, of the work that was done that is failing. Everything else has, has survived and is, and is, and is in good context. I don't know if you want to add anything.
You really don't know if it's a bad batch, you go cheers, and see how it reacts in the environment. So it happened when we pulled up under, he came out staying late, I believe, is when I contacted him. He agreed, he wanted to manufacture, they had that conversation, and all the part of it. Manufacturer agreed to supply the material, also take all of the stuff that would be broken out through the charge. And then the vendor is going to supply it from then on over that, so we can do a job which will be scheduled for after that, within the summer, so it's cool to do. All other areas are, I think, that is better, I thought, after we've gone. It's just that first batch.
All right. Any other questions for Jordan? All right. Next up, we have our committee reports and our finance subcommittee.
All right. We met earlier this evening and had our, just two warrants and approval warrants. The first one was the account payable in the amount of four hundred and six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen cents. And just, there's a description up there as well. And just to let people know, Corbin is the installer of the bleachers, so just to, to understand that. That's what we have for an approval for.
All right. I will accept a motion for the accounts payable.
I'll make a motion to accept the account payable in the amount of four hundred and six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please? Correct.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
The second warrant we have is for the payroll in the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fourteen cents. This is all in line with the budget and no surprise with you.
I will entertain a motion for the payroll.
I make a motion for a special payroll in the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and one cent.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 All right. And then we, we also had a discussion about in-game clock management in the cycles for that. And nothing's really changing. It, we just, it is going to be thirty dollars per game, per sport. So we know that in basketball season, there are a JV game and a varsity game right, right after. So it'll be thirty dollars for the JV game, thirty dollars for the varsity game, and this will go across all sports. And then the last thing, we took our first in-depth look at the twenty, apply twenty-four budget. Had some recommendations, had some questions, and we're continuing to work on that.
All like grateful. All right. We don't have any old business. Our new business, we just talked about, we, it's not going to change anything policy-wise. We just wanted to make sure that the people that were doing games were getting paid per game for basketball like they did for every other sport. Because in basketball, they go right from JV to varsity, where the other sports get, get split up, so they were getting paid per game, which wasn't happening. No, so now it is. It just wasn't.
Wow, that's too bad.
We fixed it. We fixed the problem.
Too separate.
I know. It's fixed.
It's like start and finish.
And in between.
Right. There's, there's an in-between.
And then the last thing I wanted to talk about before we talk about people business at the next meeting, is that I sent you guys all an email. I'm going to get it here right now. This is why I said it for them. One of our, our, one of our school community members passed away over the Christmas break.
Lauren was very, very, very important to our school leadership, and she was on this committee for a very, very, she was just a really, really wonderful woman. And so I want you guys all to know that we, we sent a donation to her scholarship fund. She was an educator. She was a very passionate educator. And she put her heart and soul into this committee, and she was too young, too young to go. And so I'm hoping that you all join me in a moment of silence for And I hope her family is talking about all of us and all of her, thank you for representing the committee.
Yes, I had the good fortune to sit with Brenda, the good fortune to sit with Brendan, and they talked about Lauren's service to the board. And, and her, her great faith. And I, I sat there thinking, I'm sure there are many times that she prayed for us. And, and her, and her role, and the many times that she brought her, she was a teacher. Also, and so she subbed for us in the summer sometimes in the, in the programs. And she was just a really wonderful woman. And I, I'd like to take a moment, if you don't mind, and just say, and I'm gonna try not to. But I'd like to thank the board for all the support in the last year with the sickness of my mother and, and her passing. But just how wonderful you all were. She was someone who was very important to me. Obviously, our mothers are, but you all, she knew you all. She watched our meetings. She would say, sit down and tell me what's going on. So, really, it was, you were, you were someone in her life, whether you knew it or not. So, thank you for that. It's all good. All good stuff. I hope, I hope she meets Lauren and they're up there chewing the fat. But really, your support, because I know I wasn't some of the meetings, but it was really.
Family comes first. Always, always.
Super grateful for this.
You don't show up on your anniversary, Erin? You don't show up when you're supposed to be home with your family? Family comes first, always, always. All right. The next meeting is in February. It's on Valentine's Day. I will be on a cruise through the Hawaiian Islands with my husband.
How fun are you?
So Kirk will be running the next meeting, because Ken and I will be on our, on my fiftieth, what should have been my fiftieth birthday cruise. We are finally taking it, so. Yeah. So that is when the next meeting will be. Does anybody else have any other tidbits of information they would like to share before we adjourn? I will entertain a mo-
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Any discussion?
Yes, I know it.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. We are adjourned at seven forty-three.